I was in favor. Okay, we have a couple of delegations. We have Bob Hudson here from McLeans with Mark. And they're going to make their presentation up front. This may take longer than 10 minutes, so just let you carry on and there'll be opportunity for questions, of course.
Sure, we'll try and be brief here. So again, I'm Bob Hudson from McLeans Consulting. I'm here with Mark Gandy. He's the technical lead of the project. We're here to talk a little bit about the Northeast Comox area, its stormwater management plan that we've been working on with staff. So a little bit about the background. This plan has fallen out of the need to address stormwater management in the Northeast Comox area. It's been driven by a group of landlords who have been working towards actively developing their land for a number of years. And actually, their desire to develop predates my involvement in this office. It was actually first addressed by Frank Denton about 10 years ago. And for a variety of reasons, it stalled out over the years. Primarily, it's centered around servicing. So what we now have are zoned readily developable properties. There's municipal services, we have free of subject lands, we have sewers, we have water, but we have a constraint in the stormwater management system. The Queen's Ditch is the drainage that picks up all of the stormwater from this catchment. And it's well-known, it's well-documented. The ditch is over capacity. It was constructed by DND years ago as a means of draining their septic treatment on-site to the ocean. It's a formalization of Lazo Creek. This entire area was at one time tidal, it was brackish white land that's been filled in, turned into a creek and arable lands over time. And it drains a very significant area. It extends up almost as far as Crown Isle to the Foxwood subdivision and all of DND. This doesn't show as well as we would like, but the catchment area is this red line that runs all the way up around. This is Anderson Road, all the way through Foxwood, and all the way out to roughly Gage Road. The Lazo marsh is this area here. And the subject area, our study area, is bound in blue. And these are the lands that surround the Pritchard Road and Night Road corners near the roundabout. So the Queen's Ditch, as I've alluded to, has had a history of flooding. It's common for us to drive along Night Road when we're trying to see fields flooded. This is in part because of the agricultural operations that have been occurring for years, potato farming in general. We see flooding every year as a result of upstream development and the capacity constraints in the Queen's Ditch. It's well documented. And there have been lawsuits in the past to address this. We don't need to go into that. But it was determined that the Crown, DND, and the farmers were all at fault for the drainage, for the problems that have risen from the drainage. So this has all led to the need for a higher level stormwater management in the area. So a little bit about the process. We've worked with staff and their consultant to develop a terms of reference for the study. And this terms of reference lays out the specific requirements, the goals, the objectives of this study. We're right now concluding Phase One, which seeks to establish pre-development site conditions, hydrogeology and hydrology. The next phase will look at developing post-development, unmitigated flow rates, volumes, and options to mitigate same. We're going to look at the problems that we're going to create by developing and how we can address those. And the last phase is to develop design standards to formalize the recommendations of the report and incorporate them into a real-world subdivision. So at this point, I'd like to turn the podium over to Mr. Gandy, the technical lead. He's going to walk you through a little bit of the report and what we've come up with today.
So we've focused so far on the pre-development hydrology of the site. And there's a little figure here that shows you the sort of new way of thinking to try to balance the pre-development hydrology with, I mean, the post-development hydrology with the pre-development. That is, we balance out the amount of surface flow coming off the land from runoff versus the amount of flow that gets into that, what's called the bedose layer, the interflow layer, with that which goes into the groundwater. It ultimately ends up either in the stream or in the ocean in terms of flowing to a balance. So the idea is to balance or using historical values to balance the statistical means of the three processes from post-development to pre-development. And some of those, the other one is the initial abstraction, which is your interceptions from tree cover, surface spawning, and evapotranspiration. Now, there are some limitations in the modeling that are in existence, and most of the initial abstractions are the evapotranspiration. So this is a typical graph of historical rainfall in the valley. Basically, we get more rainfall in November, December, if you hadn't noticed, and we get less in June and July. What this shows is that our system has to balance the ups and downs of the rainfall as it occurs. Some other statistics here, 40% of all days in a given year received rain. The mean annual daily rainfall now is about 44 millimeters per day. That means in any given year, we're going to have at least one rainfall that's 44 millimeters, about an inch and five-eighths. The good news is that that encompasses a large amount of rainfall. There's only a very small percentage of rainfall that exceeds that amount. So we have to balance the everyday common rainfall events with the events that happen very frequently, the one-in-a-hundred-year events, which only exceed 44 millimeters 0.8% of the time. These statistics are very typical to this region, and you can see here on this map that Courtney and Comox are here, and they form a light-colored wedge along the seaboard there, and then Campbell River slightly higher in average annual precipitation. So what we do to qualify our estimates of rainfall and runoff and recharging of the groundwater is we try to look at other streams in that area of the same shade and say, if we can assume that all else being equal in terms of ground cover, soil types, topography, the rainfall is relatively equal in those areas, then we can use those streams as surrogates to gauge our estimates against or compare our estimates to and get ourselves in the ballpark. These are the stations that we use. You can see they're all mostly around the neighborhood here, and then we have used one as far north as Quadra Island. The reason we use this particular stage or gauge was because it's in a fairly similar area where we're trying to take a look at an undeveloped scenario where there are mature trees and vegetation, and we expect similar runoff and ground filtration in our area. So we've used these seven stations. Actually, we only used six. This one here was not used. Or sorry, this one here, Blue River at Wilkinson Road, was not used. It's the closest gauge, but it's only a temporary gauge. It doesn't have any discharge records. It only has some volumes. We used it to gauge overall annual volumes, but not for the peak flows. What comes out of the model and how we establish our targets is based on what we call a flow duration curve. So this is the flow duration relationship for our study area, the 80 acres, the 80 hectares of our area. What this says is that this line here is the one-in-a-hundred-year return flow of 1.3 cubic meters per second, and it exceeds, in terms of the overall number of hours, is one hour. So one hour of the total number of hours, which is about 40,000 hours of rainfall, we exceed 1.2 cubic meters per second. This becomes very important because it's up here in these very frequent areas that we need to maintain the relationship between rainfall and that which percolates into the ground and that which runs off the land. But we also have to take care of these very infrequent events that happen 10 hours, 100 hours over the duration of history, so that if they do happen, we're ready for them. That's your stormwater ponds, your storage areas to account for these bigger storms. So as you can see, most flows here are below 0.8 cubic meters per second. This is the basis for our target for the study. And again, I went through some of the geography and land use stuff. We based our analyses on a record of rainfall from 1962 to 1999. It's hourly rainfall, hourly evaporation statistics, and hourly temperature statistics go into the model to come up with surface runoff, initial abstraction, which is your amount of water that evaporates at the time, basically, and that amount of water that goes into the shallow groundwater, which eventually comes out at the bottom of the hills, into the low marshy areas or directly into the ocean, if they're adjacent to the ocean. And the rest goes into a deeper aquifer, which then becomes your groundwater aquifers. So these statistics here are going to formulate what we want to achieve post-development. Post-development, we would expect that even though we have paved surfaces and rooftops that are impervious, we still want to maintain about 28% of the time runoff to the streets at a peak discharge rate of no more than 1.2 cubic meters per second for the total 80 hectares. 15% of the time, we still want to, if we add these two together, 15 and 18, 33% of the time, we want to deal with that water in terms of either evaporation and interception due to vegetation and/or get it into the groundwater system so that we can maintain base flows in the stream during the summer times, for instance, and replicate the hydraulic, hydrologic regime of the neighborhood. That's about where we are today. So we've agreed with the staff and the town consultant on, these are generally the targets where we want to go. These targets will actually turn into numbers, which we will assign on perhaps a per-hectare basis within the study area so that developer A and developer B can know that if they have a five-hectare parcel, that they are allowed to have 28% of the average annual rainfall to be runoff with a certain peak level target, and then 15 and 18% sort of in the area of groundwater recharge. I think that's pretty much all I've got to say as appropriate for our study thus far.
Okay. No questions, members of council?
I just had a couple of questions. One of them, I saw you refer to the Will Marsh report. I don't know how useful you found that. That was the whole of the Lazo area, where it was once that you described marshland and salt marsh.
We use the background report to establish sort of how the land has been developed over the years, so we know kind of where we were 30 years ago, where we were 10 years ago, and where we are today. The Will Marsh report doesn't really go as far as what we have established here in terms of how we want to balance the hydrologic cycle within the watershed. But it does give us a picture of what characteristic of a watershed is, both in terms of development and changes and runoff changes that have happened.
It's a higher-level study is what it comes down to, and it's towards a watershed management plan. It's the first step in the process, and this is refining that and looking at specific areas and how we meet those targets in these specific areas.
Great. And I know there was useful information, which is quite dated now, on recharge and rainwater harvesting and all the alternatives. And I did notice in the report, it mentioned that the Queen's Ditch was badly maintained. And I just wondered, it probably is him, and I didn't see it. Who actually is responsible for maintaining it?
Queen's Ditch belongs to DND. It's owned by DND, and it's in a DND right-of-way.
So it's their responsibility to deal with it. And it seemed a good synergy that this report came with our urban forest management plan. And I just wondered, how much do you see tree retention in stormwater management? I know there's a couple of good quotes in here that tie in well. 197 of our report, we just received before I'm here, the urban forests. It talks about what individuals do to their landscapes throughout the watershed has a direct impact on the stormwater quality. Planting and preserving trees is the cheapest and easiest way to assist in managing stormwater. It's a quote from the Vancouver 2011 Urban Tree Canopy Assessment. So I don't know, given that it's such a great, such a well-treated site, I just wondered. And also, it points out, page 209, the increase in property values when you've got significant tree cover, particularly large trees in the yard. So I don't know, how much are you looking to use a natural coverage to, because the trees do it themselves?
It is important, right? And that comes back to the water balance that Mark spoke to earlier and the 18% initial abstractions, 15%, sorry. It's important. In order to meet the targets that we set, this is something that's going to have to be looked at in tree retention, green areas, areas of landscaping. It is important.
Are you going to recommend any base amounts of tree retention that there should be or areas of tree retention?
That will fall out of this, yes.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, that's great. My question is...
I'll serve.
Thank you. I was just wondering if you have any idea of a timeline to complete Phase Two and Three?
Well, we've been pushing very hard, but there's a lot of factors involved, and we are, I guess, a bit behind for several reasons. If we can get some momentum going, which I think we do have now with agreement on getting the first phase done, I think we can get it done within four, six months. There's quite a public process that's involved in the terms of reference.
So you're saying Phase Two and Three will be done within that six months?
Hopefully. Hopefully we can go with that.
Okay. Council pleasure.
Thank you. And I just noticed that the two comments that you received after your first neighborhood meeting, one asked for the climate change impacts to be considered, and I see you adjusted the terms of reference on that. So I'm just wondering if you can speak to how you see yourselves making that a part of your work? And secondly, the other one was that it mentioned the ministry agriculture was to be contacted, and they wanted to meet with the project team. So I wonder if you could speak about how would that happen?
There's two separate questions that are made, Mark and you'll look at the climate change.
I'll take the first one. In terms of climate change, the analysis is based on provincially accepted water balance model, and that's an initiative by many jurisdictions and whatnot to come up with a methodology for exactly that, to maintain a balance of the hydrologic cycle. Now, there's a website, and there's a program on there, and the program currently accepts some input derived from the council or the technical committee's review of 15 different hydro, climate change models, and it's established a factor, if you will, on the monthly precipitations for wherever your geographic location is, or for instance, we've been using Comox. So then we would choose a planning horizon, say 2050 or 2080. We haven't decided upon that quite yet. And then we would use these factors, which alter the rainfall pattern. And in some areas, it can drastically differ in terms of the yearly variation in the Comox Valley. It's my understanding that summers are a little bit drier, winters are a little bit wetter. So those factors go in, and you run your historical rainfall using those factors, and you then test the sensitivity of your results with respect to what's perceived as expected climate change.
Right. Counselor.
There was another question.
The other question was, the ministry agriculture is inputting the process. They, the ministry agriculture, are one of several stakeholders that have been invited into the process, and they've been kept abreast of the happenings of the study, and they're invited to formal, a series of formal meetings to provide their input, the first of which will be scheduled. They've had an initial information release that's been given to them. The first official meeting will be held early in the new year and will coincide with the next neighborhood meeting to present their results to the public.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, you partially answered my question when you were talking about the climate change thing, but I was wondering why when you did rainfall records, you went from 62 to 99, but you've actually got a factor to take into account?
Yeah. That's the historical data that we have. There's a lag between the data they collected at the airport and the publishing of that data. And we're working on advancing it from 62 to 2005. That'll be the historical, the length of the historical record that we could possibly obtain. But then, like I say, we'll be doing this, I like to call it a sensitivity analysis because the science isn't perfect, and the time horizon's 30 to 50 years, and a lot of things can change. But then at least we can indicate with our results what the implications of a change in weather patterns might have an effect on our plan. Part of the plan is an adaptive management strategy, which the climate change becomes one of the factors.
Thank you. On your first slide, you mentioned the services existing within that area in terms of sewer and water, drinking water. Are there pump stations still required for servicing of those lines, or is it all flowing a different way now?
Yes and no is the answer. There is no kind of Comox requirement for a pump station, but the sewer just pumps eventually. It makes its way down to Night Road, along Night Road, down to the CFP gravity sewer, to the CFP pump station, and then there's a pump to Brent Road. So no new town pump stations.
All right. Good. Thanks. All right. Seeing no further questions, we will be discussing your report here shortly, so assuming you're hanging around for a little bit. All right. Thanks, gentlemen. The next presentation is from Berna Monge from the Zaburo Cultural Consulting. Welcome.
Thank you.
And Ian, who's with you as well?
Ian Gold is the associate that worked with me on the urban forest management plan. He's a registered professional biologist. I understand you do have a copy of the document?
Yes.
I'm doing the old-school method here, so it's not showing at all. Sorry. What should be given for an Ian? So I'm just going to start right with the executive summary, looking on page five and talking about what we're talking about at urban forest. The urban forest is everything that's within your community that's on public and private lands, natural areas, et cetera. The vision statement that we put together here for your urban forest management plan reads that you will manage the urban forest for a thriving, healthy universe that's going to have linking natural areas to the other green spaces and enhance community vulnerability and bring environmental benefits to future generations. I think that vision is wonderful. It really puts together some of your comments in your OCP. And some of the challenges that were brought up in your OCP is a lot of the benefits that we've outlined in the urban forest management plan. We looked at the OCP, the regional growth strategy and sustainability strategy when we developed this urban forest management plan. I'm just flipping over to page eight and looking at how we did the development of the urban forest management plan. We did an inventory of the publicly-owned trees, an assessment of the 11 natural areas, an analysis of both, and then provided you the standard policies and listings of strategies. So we developed it up into the four areas, the four neighborhoods, according to the OCP, and that's what this map is that's on page nine of the document, west Comox, downtown, central Comox, and north Comox. The fun thing was, was that when I was first met with staff, and I thought, well, roughly, how many trees do you think you guys have? And I've done a lot of tree inventories in small communities, and I think we've got maybe a thousand, maybe 1,500, maybe 3,500. And I think I've missed a few, so I need to hug a few more out there. So when I did the inventory for the public trees, they were all GPS, so they all have an actual location that those, that will be on a GIS layer within your data, in your data set with public works. And then the information that Ian gathered on the natural areas, that also was mapped. So there's a central point, there's the data that's within the document. So you can go back in five years and update that information that you didn't even have in the natural areas. So 3,500 trees in this community, the 11 natural areas, that was the other map that I had gotten blown up here to show on the natural areas. For the communities that I've worked in and under the forest management plans, hats off to the town of Comox. You have a vibrant, wonderful urban forest, wonderful health of condition of trees, very good diversity of trees. The natural areas overall are top-notch. We have the usual problem of invasive weeds in our natural areas that is addressed again in the document. The one thing that I did take note of when I did the inventory is heritage trees. There's a definition of heritage trees in the document. There's 44 trees that were identified in the data set that are heritage trees, 33 of them are on the golf course, and then on other sites throughout the community. So I just will briefly talk about each neighborhood. In the west Comox area, there's 788 trees. Most of those are smaller, younger trees because of the developments of areas. Overall health is good, diversity is good. The graphs that are outlined in the document shows you the diversity. Recommendations for that area mostly is plant health care, meaning watering, fertilizing programs. Plant health care is something that a lot of communities put in place within their, either staff, or they get people to come in and do. But watering programs such as a water truck or teaching the public on watering trees that have been planted at new development sites. So that's what plant health care refers to. The natural areas, Aspen Park, Condor Park, the Bog area is also outlined in the document. And then downtown Comox, what we did with downtown Comox is we took out the golf course and the Philbert in the data set. So just downtown, there's 349 trees in the downtown area. Again, mostly smaller, smaller trees with good condition, very good diversity again, which is great. Why I say that's great is because you plant all the same trees, I usually just have to say elm trees. Remember what happened to the elm trees? We planted all the elm trees, we got that gelled disease. You've got good diversity, you've got really better control of diseases and insect colonies. The golf course has the highest population of trees, 855 trees on the golf course. They range from the size of five centimeters to 196 centimeters. There's some gorgeous, beautiful, lovely trees on the golf course. And with having larger trees is also a little bit more management issues as improving risk assessing, that type of thing. So that's, that obviously happens on the golf courses. So a beautiful set there. There's natural areas at the golf course that also Ian did some study plots on. And I'm going to go right to the Philbert. The Philbert has over 500 trees on that nine acres. It is undoubtedly the most diverse of species of trees I've ever seen north of Victoria. It's a very beautiful, wonderful condition and very well-maintained, a very big, beautiful jewel that Comox has, and it continues in that manner. Port Augusta Park is also another park in the downtown area. And then we get in... And then we get into central, the central Comox. And central Comox is in the brown here, 810 trees, again, small to medium sized, there are newer developments, same issue, health care. People tend to forget that it's, you water it for a year. You know you have to water it for more than one year, you have to kind of keep doing that. So those, those are kind of the things that came up in the, the central Comox area. And then we have a lot of parks in central Comox. We've got the Village, Salish, Lions, Portry Park, Pipeline, Greenway, McDonald Woods, et cetera. And, and then again, the data that Ian provided, there's some excellent information on each, each of the parks and what some of the issues that came up within some of those. If you go to north Comox, has a fewer number, 183. The diversity of these trees is good, the health overall is quite, is quite good. Recommended actions, again, mostly goes down to plant health care. And then there's Foxwood and then Northeast Woods. Northeast Woods, Ian did three different study areas and I spent some time walking through it on page 48. We recommend that to better protect the natural qualities of the area, we do recommend that the trails be recorded and properly managed for danger trees, et cetera. Because we don't really know where all those trails are and we have a lot of public use in the area. And Highwood Park. Getting onto page 52 talks about the management goals. And from the data that you have, you've got around 3,500 publicly owned trees, we have 11 natural areas, you have a really good canopy cover. Communities kind of base their, how well they're doing by canopy cover. And canopy cover, the goal is always around that 25 to 30% canopy cover. But Comox has 50. So it's awesome, it's great, it's really great. And we also go into discussing a little bit further in the document about green space allocation. Green space allocation, some of the latest information that I received from the planning department was that there's a median of like 6.1 hectares per thousand people with a goal of about 9.2. Well, the town of Comox has 12.1 hectares per thousand people for green space allocation, which is fantastic, great now, you can Yahoo, but think about the future. Think about if we follow our regional growth strategy, the way we're gonna go, that number may go down to that nine hectares per thousand people, et cetera. But the, the thing that, that really hit me was that where all our public trees are and where the rest of our canopy cover is. Our publicly trees, public, public trees probably cover about 30% of our whole community. The rest of those trees are gonna make up that canopy cover on private property. So within your document, we also address how we can maybe encourage good tree management on their private property. So on page 52, there's the eight measures that I've outlined. And that 50% canopy cover that we have, which is fantastic, wanna try and maintain that and establish that. And number two is to maintain the trees in a healthy condition. In the document, it outlines adopting and making sure we follow the YSA standards, that's the International Society of Agriculture. Number three is to establish and maintain optimal level of age and species diversity. And there is becoming, that's where you wanna know a little bit more of us on private land. What do we have that's on diverse areas or diverse types of trees that are on other areas? And how soon we can continue to conserve all our tree resources? I've mentioned in the document about a tree inventory program, maybe looking at your tree bylaws, tree ordinances for more conservation. Item number five talks about select, situate, and maintain urban trees. And I was really fortunate to get a colleague, Arterist Alan Kemp from the city of Anima, to provide me with his document that they have in their strategy on all the different types of trees that they are recommending for, for planting under power lines, beside power lines, in boulevards, et cetera. And it's a, I think it's a great list that we have, that now we have the use of, of that type of material. Number six is promote effective and cost-effective management. That's looking at what kind of management do we have that I found from the data? We need to have a little bit more plant health care, some pruning, a little bit of risk assessing. Can we do that in-house? Do we do it in-house? What do we do with that? So that's outlined again in the document. Foster community support, look at an invasive weed program within our natural areas, can we involve our friends, et cetera? And number eight is encourage good tree management on private property. The city of Victoria appendix that's in within the document talks about, you know, what can we do? Can we put in bylaws, policies, information, education, that type of thing for people on privately owned properties? And as in the science of number eight, I mean, I did a covenant for privately owned trees in the city of Courtney. So I mean, people can do that if they want to approach that type of encouraging of good tree management on private property. So with the understanding of where we're at with the canopy cover that we have and the, the green space allocation, it's phenomenal in the county of Comox, it is really great. The tree inventory, as you see where we've got, you've got a lot of open pockets, if you will. However, we don't know what the canopy cover is of the privately owned trees. The densification is, is good in some areas, obviously in the golf course and the Philbert. But now we have the tools. Now the Public Works Department can bring this up on the layer, they can look at it, they can be able to, be able to manage the trees that you have. So I just, I think I'll stop at that point and see if Ian wanted to add anything that I just, in the document, or any findings?
I think one of the most interesting things I noticed was, Comox is, I think it's six years now into a curbside pickup yard base. And it's still an enormous number of people all around the natural areas that just dump it. And so this is something that it just may give a little bit of notification to them. It was very obvious.
Yeah, I, I've noticed that in areas where I walk, it's still an issue and I saw some of your photos here. And I don't know, it's maybe just a pattern people got into and they don't wanna bother with, you know, bundling it up or putting it in a bin. It's very frustrating to see that.
Yeah, I was drawing up a picture just the other day, someone's just bucket full of weed swaying it through Brooklyn Creek and thinking, okay, well, it's gonna plug the culvert down below and it's gonna bite me. So it's just, it does take a little bit of awareness.
All right, thank you. Fascinating report and excellent presentation, certainly a cop of mine for all of us.
I just have one question, thank you. I really enjoyed reading this report and I realized I don't know the names of very many trees. But I was looking at your tables in the inventory summary, tree type, number of trees, and so on. The range of tree condition and there's numbers attached to that, can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure.
Oh, one of them cannot, anyone? It's in, any of those trees?
So any of them that has the, the tree type, number of trees, DTH?
Yeah, the range of tree condition is...
Ranging between 5 to 80%. It's an example. And average...
Well, this is a percentage?
Yes, yeah. So tree condition is a percentage, so 5 to 80. And average range of tree condition would be like 65%. So we've, I'm, I'm looking, I just opened this up to the golf course actually. Conifers, average on them is 65% for tree condition and for the deciduous trees, it was 59%.
That, sorry, what does that percentage relate to?
Pretty much a tree that is in good condition would be 68 and higher, you know? So if we've got in, we're in that 50 to 65 range, then we're looking at plant health care, what's, what's up? Take a little bit better look at it?
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Yes, and Ian, thank you for your report and it's, it's very thorough. Do you, do you know of any successful public education programs? Because, you know, the invasive species that come from the dumping of yard waste and, and it does seem to be very prevalent. So have you, how do you get through to people? I, I saw actually the other day, a young group that was digging up around the mailboxes all the needles and mess that he'd been dumping there. And I guess somebody had said to him, you know, you shouldn't do that. So he actually came along and dug it up and took pumpkins and that, right? That, that was the first time I'd ever seen anyone doing that, what we did.
I've heard of programs with municipalities where they just do a really strong educational program, if it's by day workshops, half-day workshops, a couple hours workshops, or it's newsletters. There's, I know of one community where they actually hired students to, to really spend all summer long educating people in regards to invasive weeds and working with student groups, that type of thing. So there are some programs out there and I'd be more than happy to try and, you know, give a summary of some of the, the good stories.
The city of Campbell River has a brochure and I believe they're working with, it's called the Greenways Land Trust, that they're actively working on this. I think they're brochure somewhere.
Seattle has a really good program too, that's, that's a very good one on invasive weed control in their natural areas and they're very aggressive. It's called the Forest Ranger Group, so.
And are you finding that people are calling you in earlier, I, I'm thinking of land developers, I'm watching just, you know, quite enjoyment of your property, that it does seem that if you can identify the healthy trees, the trees that are, you know, safe to keep on the property, and I have the arborist report as your ground map for then how you go ahead with development, we'd be much more successful. Are you, are you seeing that that is happening or do you think we could make that more, you know, how to attract people to that process there?
Yeah, I mean, in my business, yes, I'm finding I'm getting more people that are wanting to develop or to, to, thinking about that, are starting to ask those questions. Yes, definitely. I'm not sure what my other colleagues in the industry know, certainly turning more above it.
Are there any communities that require that the arborist report is the dominant, is the first document that comes across for the legal application?
Absolutely, yes.
Do you know, if somebody...
Well, city of Vancouver, north Vancouver, many of the communities in the Fraser Valley definitely have that set up. Work that I did within Edmonton, they have started that stipulation, the SASTU is actually looking to.
Because we have so much, but you know, clearly with the big trees, once they've gone, you're waiting another couple of hundred years. Gone a lot to treasure.
Yes.
All right, Councilor, can you grab?
Yeah, I was just wondering when, we're doing a lot more infill development now and with that comes the loss of trees and in a lot of cases, it's Douglas fir trees on these properties. Now I noticed on page 61 of your report, it says 25% of any one genus for a city as a whole is a recommend, recommended no more than that.
Correct.
So what we're doing now is if you're outside the building envelope, take one down and plant one, two, I think it's three actually, well, I think it's one, but we recommend three.
Right.
Now, there's been a lot of people that I've talked to don't see that putting a Douglas fir into where your house is makes a lot of sense on your property from a owner point of view. From your point of view, and I'm wondering if I'm misreading goal three here in that report, but, you know, when I look at any of these, it seems like we've got a pile of Douglas firs in our town.
Right.
Would it be, make more sense to plant some other kind of tree if you're gonna have a house on that property near it when you take one down, I guess is the question.
If I'm, I'll answer it in the manner that I think I understand your question. We have predominant species of Douglas fir because of where we are. But we don't wanna turn around and tell people you can plant anything else instead of a Douglas fir because if we have the same issues or worse issues around infrastructure, foundations, et cetera. So, so I think that's where your list of trees that you say that you can plant if you take out a Douglas fir has to be really itemized on where do you plant it? Is it going to be 10 meters away from the house or can it be within one meter? That type of thing. Should we be planting Douglas fir to Douglas fir? Yes, if I have the spot to put the Douglas fir. But if I don't have the area, that growth location, then maybe I should be planting two different small trees and one medium tree.
Right.
Again, that's where I think the knowledge of the people that work within the planning and the, the parks should be able to help people.
Right, yeah. You don't wanna just put any old tree in there, that wouldn't make sense to me. Thanks.
Councilor, pleasure.
Thank you. Thanks for your report. I'm wondering if you can just calm me as I look at the page where it says immediate action on the golf course for forty trees to be removed. I know there's a lot of trees there, so forty's probably not that many, but it's, I was like, wow, whoa.
My due diligence as an arborist is when I do know trees that are large and that do require assessment, that is...
But they jump, right?
Sorry, 64, her report is...
Two, two or so more.
The reason I had to put that in there and it's because of my due diligence, when I'm seeing trees that I am, they're red flags, they're red flags for me, that we have to look at them at least, risk assess them by a certified risk assessor and mitigate them. This is a public area and that's why I had, I placed it in the inventory report because that was my findings. Because when I go out to do a tree inventory, I go out and do a tree inventory and I go, I look at the trees, I assess them for health, et cetera, and as soon as I see anything that's a structural issue, then my risk assessor's happy with them. So then I have to say, oh, well, we have to, because this is, this is my due diligence and for your safety. So, that's why I had to listen to you.
Great. Well, again, thanks for your report. I think the most telling part of it, I think, is the very last paragraph on page 05 where you talk about the importance of local citizens understanding the relationship between urban forestry goals and specific actions. Of course, we now know the inventory. I assume that the next step for us, talk to staff a little shortly, is to get, open this out into the public and set some rules and encourage the voluntary compliance around issues around trees. We talked about the tree protection bylaw being looked at for 2013, you know, giving us a nice example, thank you. And of course, the always challenging issues around bird waste, everything, so thank you for your report, folks. All righty, so we will now turn to the actual reports for receipt on the northeast Stormwater Management Plan, the draft phase one report. Staff are looking for motion from committee to receive that. We'll receive that. Receive that. Oh, the favor, questions, carry. Any discussion, comments for staff or how an engineer is here to, in our finer course to coordinate that report and its conclusion. So anything to add, finer or an engineer, this time?
No, but also wanted to note at the end, a question directed to Jim DuMont.
Rest, the...
Thanks all, from our expert. Now, Jim wants to add it.
On the spot.
All right. Barbara and Kathy.
I just, you know, what is the process after this and, and, and Councilor Swift, to really, you know, what's the timelines and when did it complete?
Okay, planner, I'll let you tackle that first.
The, I mean, I agree with Bob that I only have six months as a major gap, plus or minus, and if we can get it through earlier, better. Part of this to, with the exception of Jim DuMont, the, the rest of the staff is all term. We are, we haven't necessarily done this by time before. So we are learning through this and also the area is quite unusual in terms of the data, so just phase one alone, it was the data collection, which, of the calibration of model, the different streams, what data is available, what data isn't available. So we're, there's quite a few variables in my notes. I do agree that also that I think that we have addressed a lot of the fundamental issues that were causing some of the most significant time delays in terms of what is the terms of reference? Who's gonna be funding the project? Are we going ahead with the project or not? Because one of the things that we're also dealing with is, well, you have a number of property owners that are interested in the, in the area. Then all of a sudden, you start getting into looking at who is going to be, this is largely development driven, front-end driven on the cost, right, with the cost recovery mechanism. So then all of a sudden, you start getting into the, okay, well... So then all of a sudden, you start getting into, okay, we're going to put up, put up money, what exactly is the terms of reference? So those items have now been all ironed out. And you will be having a cost recovery by law, what is coming forward, you can change rate. So we have a supplemental now, and we kind of clarify the variables of the month. So I'm quite comfortable with that, that timeframe. The next phase is actually, we now have the inputs in terms of the current situation. So the next phase is to start saying, looking out, if we go to, if we go to and develop the area, what is going to be the impact? Do we develop the area without any mitigation or low impact, just develop, develop it as normal? And then what's going to be the results in terms of doing the water balance, you will have, you know? The third phase will then start getting into the actual infrastructure design requirements as a sentence. The part of the phases two and three will also start getting into what's going to be public, what's going to be private, what are the maintenance schedules, what are the implications for budgeting, staff training. These are, these are quite different systems than what we're used to. A good example, I mean, is even our classic system of attention on. Look at our last 10 years' experience of attention on. You don't fancy it just grass, that we learn regulations, you have a certain slope, grass is a mistake, you gotta grab a bit. Then you get, then we go to the grass. Well, it's not quite, suddenly, this utilitarian structure becomes an amenity in the community. So how can we increase that? How can we deal with maintenance once we find out that what happens after 10 years of the prevention? So we want to try to flush out as much of that as possible so we don't pass what our needs and implications and what, what the cost of the cost of that is for them. So it's really those two stages. Once we have Phase 2, what is going to be the impact of development, that will go back to what will impact development. Phase 3, what is going to be the infrastructure design plan? Then that will complete plan, it's adopted by council, council will then set a number of parameters for developers that they have to then meet as they develop and test their servicing structures onsite. And part of that, that will be done by the developers' transition process.
Kathy?
So my assumption here is that McNamara has been hired by the potential developers to support. And we have Mr. Dune on hired, sort of as a second pair of eyes to oversee it. So I think it would be our due diligence or improvement must actually have Mr. Dune at some point present to us after he's reviewed the findings. I'm just wondering if that's worked together, something that we will have in works?
The draft report that had been presented to us has got continuous input and receipt from Jill Peacock and from the other committees. So that is already built in. We will identify the reason why it's draft. There are some administrative items and some additional information, let us look into the report before finish off Phase 1. So it's a bit of a collaborative effort, it's ongoing collaborative efforts in terms of the management and the results as we go forward. And so we expect to have that in release chamber. That will be put in council boxes so that, we're hoping to have it go to council, oh, about the 11th. Because we want to have our next public meeting at around the 15th or 16th. So the idea is to have, make sure the council has the final in their hands before we go to the public with questions, which will have to, and then, so we have the information to the public and have a meeting on, say, the 15th. We then get posted on our website and then we can follow up with stakeholders and get their input. And that will all be put back in Phase 2 report results, those meetings, plus the information in terms of what is the ultimate objective.
Just personally, I feel if we had our professional present to us, his perspective, I would feel very comfortable with that.
I would be concerned if you do that the next time, perhaps there's a presentation at the Phase 2 lunch or whatever it is. But it is being done, dealt with internally at the staff. And Barbara?
I just have one quick question. And what about liability? You know, the reason that it's such a complex issue is because the lowland is all at capacity, drainage is all at capacity. So what happens if something didn't work and then we're flooding? Will it be the town liable or will it be the engineering firm? Will it be owners? How, obviously, we want to get it right, but I'm just curious with having the liability.
The intent and the design, the terms of reference of this study is the town not liable. So the intent would be to, let's say that we adopt this form of natural plan, 10 years from now, somebody floods and they want to join the town in a lawsuit, we would be able to say, well, we have now modeled. Part of this modeling is not even looking at the current situation, we're looking at the 100% forest cover. Some of those areas have been cleared. So it's, so it's a higher standard for that to me. So we'd be able to say, well, okay, here's the situation in terms of the flood, when it was 100% forest cover. We're making in terms of the key areas, i.e. when there's flooding, damage. So right now, if you go to the farmlands, they're all intentionally, during, are intentionally flooded at this time of year, sort of back ditching. So just because you have flooding doesn't mean that there's actual damage at certain times of the year that is key. And our intent would be to be able to show that from the natural system, we are not having any additional damage. But also, our intent would be able to, the study is completely adopted, would be to go to the water stations and say, well, this is what we're doing. So we will need to be promised to initiate management of this area across the north of this. Problem, a lot of the problem downstream is so much that it's active, it has to be. It was never designed. It was a sanitary sear ditch that slowly started to get used to pour storm water as well. And the lowlands have a large network of individual ditch systems that's not controlled, it's not coordinated. So you're starting to get all those kind of factors put into it. And the intent of this study, we will approach it such that, that's so complex and all the water station on the house is to not be joining the town. We're able to show that, we've done, we have kept our house in the water, we should go see somebody, see somebody else.
Why that doesn't hit us?
It does, yeah.
Any further questions regarding this report? Thank you. It'll come back to us in the near future with Phase 2 results of the next public meeting. Thank you, Mr. Peacock, for being here. All right, so next is, staff are looking for council, our committee to approve and then go to council, of course, but to approve the Urban Forest Management Plan.
Move.
Second. Discussion approval then? Further questions, comments?
I guess, I guess, you know, once we've approved it, where do we go from here with this?
Good question. Our Parks and Building Superintendent, he's in charge of this.
I think one of the most important things, and we're going to have alluded to it in our presentation, is the fact of really starting to bone up on our public education as it pertains to numbers, I think, the plant health care issues that were brought up, especially in newly constructed subdivisions. And some of those subdivisions that we impacted a few years ago, the plant health care of the boulevard trees, for example, is something that we've had, that we just want to get the message out to the homeowners to take better care of the, of the street trees. Although the street trees are publicly owned trees, a lot of them are contained within the confines of landscapes that are a continuation of the homeowner's landscapes. We rely on the homeowners to a great extent to take care of our infrastructure for us because their resources are somewhat limited in terms of going around taking care of the tiny bits over there. So encouraging, educating and encouraging our public to help us out in that regard. Working in regional district and other jurisdictions to address the invasive plant issues that we're all experiencing out there is paramount, I think, at this point. So I guess what I'm getting at is if we can chip away at the relatively simple exercises, we can build that momentum up and continue on top of some of our larger issues over there. I think, and I want to thank folks learning and Ian and their group for putting this document together as a parks manager, this is a very important and beautifully crafted tool for us to go into the future, you know, in working with not only our own staff, our stewardship groups as well. It gives us good solid data to encourage and bolster support from our community groups. And I wouldn't be surprised if our local green team, such as Island, could be interested in trusting and maybe as an exercise as part of their stewardship initiatives, they embrace this document and dissect it as well. I'm sure they'd find a lot of information to take with them that would be helpful and educational for them. So I tend to talk to Jill Peacock over at Island, get her, her opinions and maybe some guidance on how she'd like to involve the kids. And, yeah, so I guess what I'd add, baby steps, tackle the ones that we feel we can get handle on right away. Work with our other jurisdictions to form a more developed outlook on how we're working approaches in the future. And then tackle the big ones with the good guidance from private consultants such as our nail staff.
One of the suggestions, recommendations is that the Parks Department determine if they can manage actions of, that are recommended here in-house by having a trained, I'd say, certified arborist staff member science exam. Are there people on staff that may be trained up to that level or...
We have, we have a man house arborist, and Dan has been involved in some of the initial discussions leading into the document. And Vern and Dan have worked on other things, so that's pretty much so to allocate, I can't afford that conversation. And we've been a little more free rein out there.
And I know we've talked about tree retention bylaw coming forward in 2013, here, next year, and certainly there'll have to be some public presentation on that, not just at council. But you see an opportunity, perhaps in conjunction with that or separately, to have this kind of information presented in a public open house of some kind? I know we just had one on, on our infrastructure work, but is that something staff are looking at? I, for one, do know about, you know, the number of trees and the variety of trees and the importance of diversity trial. So is that something staff are, do have? Great. I'm sure it would be quite fascinating for all of the people to understand and hold that awareness. I don't know, some of the other issues that we're talking about. All right, for your next question?
Just to say thank you for encouraging us to go forward and have taken this document as a credit, it's one of the great value tool in the Parks Department. One question and one comment. One, I was just wondering why the Kaibai area wasn't on, we have a park down in Kaibai and the Kaibai is still, I was wondering why that wasn't included? And I noticed the comments on Kaibor Freeway that some of the neighbors have started to kind of hate it. Kind of what we've seen on another place in town that is called the, so that being a new area, I would certainly encourage staff to progress that early so that that ownership doesn't get too deep in the nest.
There's one, again, there's one citizen that I know up, up over there that started to approach into the Kaibor Freeway and we'll talk about that. We've been working along that edge as well in terms of some, I would say, some dumping issues that we're having along that edge as well. So we'll be, we'll talk about that shortly. And Kaibai, we haven't had a look at that yet, so we'll look at that as well.
I think we not have a tree protection bylaw that applies up there. So our tree protection bylaws in place, so we have the Kaibai, because of the soil and the, and the issues of, but we have the form of the phrase, I think. All right, we'll look forward to receiving more on this in terms of public information and education. And thank you for bringing this report. So a motion to approve is on the floor. And for the discussion, a motion is carried. All right, so no correspondence, we're having an in-camera meeting at the conclusion this week, so a motion to the public under Section 90 can be required.
Okay.
All in favor? Carrie, we'll have a brief adjournment while...